I'm a resident here in Waynesville. I know you've had a challenging few months, but please know that what you do, your efforts, don't go unnoticed. And we appreciate all the work that you do selflessly to serve the people of Waynesville. Can I pray for you? Almighty God, we give you thanks for this night and for a warm building to be in. And God, we give you thanks for this community, this place we get to call our home, Waynesville, Missouri. God, we give thanks for the businesses, the organizations, churches, all of the people who make it a great place to live, to play, to work. I give you thanks for this city government and for these individuals who selflessly give to serve the public. Give them wisdom. Oh, God, we pray for healing over our city as difficult decisions have been made in recent weeks. I pray that you give them wisdom to move forward so that the best interests of our community is served. God, we give you praise in the name of your son. Amen.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started this evening with the council meeting, I have a few notes that I want to try to share. I want to share with the citizens of Waynesville and all those in attendance tonight. And it is pertaining to our plan for the next 60 to 90 days, where we are, where we're going, just how to explain the process a little bit. These are just some priorities that have been set forth to help us through this transition with the upcoming election in April. So there's a lot of moving pieces, but we're trying to accommodate and make this transition as smooth as possible. First of all, our first priority is to appoint and fill every seat that needs to be filled on our boards and our committees. With that being said, our park board or boards of adjustments has one seat that is vacant. Our park board has two seats that are vacant. Our planning and zoning board also has one vacancy. And last, but not least, we have a vacancy for Ward Four, which we will make our first commitment to this change by appointing Robert Hyatt for our... Robert Hyatt, I had Bob Hyatt. But he will be fulfilling that role as the Ward Four councilman. He is running uncontested for the Ward Four seat, so we want to go ahead and integrate him, bring him on the team. He's no stranger to volunteering within his community. He currently serves on our planning and zoning board, and he will transition into our team. And we can go ahead and move forward with that piece. This will be a full council for the first time in a little less than a year. With my position and my role as the mayor pro temp, I will also perform all of the duties as the mayor, which means I can appoint and veto. I can also retain my vote for my job within the Ward Three. So we will have a full commission to perform the duties and the tasks, and then we will make the necessary adjustments as we continue to move forward. Pending approval, we're going to make some other adjustments. Then we may even have a committee week, where we have all of our committee meetings in one week, but then that's still subject. We will talk with the council and see how we can make this happen. But that is our intent, is to try to make things a little bit more feasible for the team. As far as the appeals process and the reason why we're not voting tonight on positioning me in the position of mayor or whoever the candidate may be is because we want to allow the appeals process to run its course. We're going to allow for, it's 30 days, but an additional 10 days, so 40 days. So the earliest that we will vote or the council will recommend a mayor for the city of Waynesville will be March, or the latest will be April of this year. And from that standpoint, whoever is, he or she, whoever is appointed as the mayor will assume those duties until the end of that current term. The current term ends on April 2024. So it'll be duties for one year. If the recommended replacement or the candidate for mayor is not, is on the council, then we will have another seat that is open for our council again, which will ensue another appointment from the appropriate ward. Once the mayor is selected, we will then also have to assign a mayor pro temp, which is what we always do, is customary every year. The council will select a mayor pro temp for those duties for a year. So it's recommended by the peers. I will tell you that the recommendation for the mayor does not have to be from the council. It can be anybody that's nominated from that. Communicating this to the council, the council will be the ones that recommend that. They just have to meet the requirements that's set forth in our ordinances, which is they must be 30 years of age. They must have been a resident within our city limits for the last two years. And let me make sure I didn't forget anything, because I did not go on order. I wrote this down. That pretty much sums everything up. So we will go ahead and open it up for citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments tonight? Please move towards the podiums, take your name and address. I never seen you before, so...
Tim, do I need to use this? All right. Well, gosh, I haven't spoken to you guys in a long time. And it is a joy to be here tonight. And I'm here with two hats on tonight. As all of you know, I am with Jack Swoburn, Michelle Brown, Jennifer, Doug, and Randy Brown, who is here tonight, serving on the committee for the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the Ruby Doo Bridge. That event's going to be April 1st, 1 to 3. Please, everybody, be there. It's going to be a fun event, and I brought a special present. These are our bracelets. We are going to be giving these to the public, and I brought bracelets for the city council members. Please wear it. Please wear it. And Rob is on the committee. I apologize, I missed Rob. And I have... But Amanda, give her one, would you? And Bob?
Yes.
For you. You're welcome. And if I could beg just two more minutes. I also have another hat. I belong to the Route 66 Centennial Commission. I was appointed by Governor Parson. We have begun our work, and in fact, it is a great committee. Jack Swoburn and I both serve on that. And I must tell you, when I saw the pictures tonight of the new Dollar General, I want to compliment you. My committee is just going to be ecstatic. In fact, I'm sending pictures to them tonight. They are going to be thrilled to death to see this. You know, I don't have to show my credentials about I love you downtown Waynesville. All of you know me. And you know that I've loved Waynesville for 52 years that I've lived here. And as I was watching all the stuff that was going on with the Dollar General store, I was just amazed. I hate to say the word ignorant, but how ignorant people can be to say things like, "Tell the city to say no, no, no." The city doesn't say no, no, no. We have planning and zoning. We follow the rules. Why would you say no to a business in an empty lot that's been there for 15 years? And the other thing I wanted to say, I'll try to say it nicely, is we all love the Constitution. We all believe in free enterprise. How could you tell Mr. Mitchell, "No, you can't sell your property"? That's not going to happen in Waynesville, Missouri. So I just want you to know that I am excited about what's going to happen downtown. I see all kinds of possibilities for us. I think this is going to be a great addition. Your property value is going to increase. Your traffic is going to increase. There's just a lot of possibilities there in the future, and I'm all for you. And you know, people that, if you had a problem with what was going on, bring your ideas to the city. It's amazing. And I will close with this. I want to thank the city council people for standing up, especially Rob, Rice, Bill Farnum, who are from Ward One, for standing up and bringing all of the complaints and the concerns that people had. And I want to compliment you, representing Dollar General, the fact that you listened to them and that you worked with them. That's the way things are supposed to be done. And as a citizen of Waynesville, I am thrilled and I am so excited to put the future in the city. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens' comments? With that being said, I'm going to ask Mr. Doyle to introduce our special guest for the presentation this evening.
So as everybody can see, hopefully, and the people watching on TV can see the slideshow running. We've worked very hard. I know that Bill Farnum and Robert Ice along with Doug Potts have worked many months in trying to coordinate this effort and turn it into what we see today. So we have a gentleman here, Rodney Parrott, who is the designer for the site. He did the site layout, and he's also really been a very good catalyst between us and the developer of this property. And as Luigi said before, we, there was a lot of communication to improve this, to make this a community project more so than just a development. And I really appreciate him working with us on that. So if you don't mind, I'm going to let Rodney come up and discuss his design with us.
Thank you all for hearing me out tonight. Again, I'm Rodney Parrott with Overland Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the Overland Group, who is a major Dollar General developer in the area. As John said, we are proposing to develop the Dollar General multi-corner of Olive Street and Route 66. And this is a building with the frontage facing 66 to kind of carry on the uniqueness of the downtown area. And as John mentioned, we have worked with the city on a couple of different meetings to try to come up with a unique building design and a sign that'll match the aesthetics of the existing community. The proposed entrance into the site will be from Olive Street and Route 66. And we have parking, 35 parking spaces. We have a little bit of extra area on the east side of the property that would be potentially useful to the city. So we've been working with you guys on that. And I'm not a very good presentation person, so I am more of a, I'll relay the concerns. So if you've got any concerns or questions, I'd be glad to get back to our developer and get communication open.
Are there any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. And thank you for all of the work that you did and the patience through this entire process. We appreciate it. Boards, commissions, and board commission report. We have a park board tonight with Mr. Brown.
Evening, everybody.
Please use the mic so they can hear you on the record. Thank you.
Chairman, it might be you tonight. You asked me if I would give the report. We called to order at 6:20. We had everyone there that we've got. Like Mr. Wilson said, we have two openings on the board that we'd like to fill. We have some interest in at least one of them. So hopefully, we can get this resolved and get back up to full power. There was no report from the park board, or the park superintendent. He could not be there. We did have the Master Gardeners' report from Rachel Watson. Slow time of the year, of course. But she did let us know that they are possibly getting some more members. So hopefully, come the spring, they'll have enough to really go add it the type they want to. They are not backed by anybody. They do everything on a basis of people have given them money, any kind of donations they can get to do what they do, especially down there at the RV park. I'm sure you've all seen that plop up there. If not, you should go up and take a look at it. And they're making some great changes to it. We have decided on the names for the three buildings that are not named. At this point, we're not ready to give them out. We still have some research that needs to be done. I told them, if you're going to pick the three names, you better give me some information on these people, because I'm going to be asked, "Why did we pick these three?" So hopefully, by next month, we'll have all that information. They're also going to try to get all the rest of the information we need for cost, design. We've pretty much decided on color and design for them. Hopefully, next month, we can give you a full run on that. The only other thing that came up under new business, Mr. Smith, Kate Smith gave his opinion and recommendations for the bathroom at the Springs. He's not happy with them. They're, it's not. I told him that I have been in contact with the city administrator, administrator, Mr. Doyle, and that plans are being made to remedy this situation. And I don't blame Mr. Smith. The bathroom there is in sad shape. It does need to be redone or tore down and replaced. It's been there for, what, 15, 16 years?
Longer than that.
Anyway, our next scheduled meeting is March 9th at 6:00 PM. We adjourned at 7:20 PM.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council?
I've got one. And this may not have anything to do with the park board. Who is responsible for the decorations and stuff that's signed near I-44?
I believe that is the Master Gardeners'.
Okay.
Oh, I heard. One hundred.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Mr. Doyle, did you want to kind of expand on what Mr. Brown brought up about the colorful comments of Mr. Kate? Can we expand on the process of what we were trying to do at that period of time?
Sure. So what the city was looking at at that point was a grant opportunity to not only... It's on. To not only maybe improve the restroom situation at the Spring, but also possibly extending the sidewalk or walking trail to that restroom from the handicap fishing pad. We're trying to address this from several locations. One direction would be providing a restroom not only on that side of our park, but also hopefully an ADA restroom on that side of our park. The city's currently working through a grant and trying to work through the logistics of that grant to ensure that what happens with that building, there's a few complexities there. That building existing is in a floodway. So we all know the challenges of that. Some of the newer restrooms in the Ruby Doo Park were originally placed in a floodway, and then we had to move them so they were not in that floodway. So we're working through some logistics on that. But our approach was, I don't know, we're probably two months, three months into planning on this grant, trying to get the information to apply to upgrade that area to what we think the people deserve.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we provide feedback to the board on the steps that the cities have been taking to improve that, because we all have the same concern. With that being said, that the board understands, if they have anything of concern, we're on the same team, that they come to us and talk to us, because that's the way business is done.
That's correct. I would also like to add that my last year working for the city, we got electricity and water to that site. So we've been working on this. We had, the electric department had to update the Peter line going down Sperry Road. Since it had the trench dug, we went ahead, laid water and electricity to it. So now we do have that up there to work with.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Always a pleasure. We did not have a planning and zoning meeting, so we will go to our standard committee reports. We will start with our utilities from Mr. Conley.
The committee met on February the 7th at 3:30 with myself, Councilman Rice, Councilman Liberty's head in as a third party. We came called order at 3:30. We had no citizens' comments. We approved the minutes, and we talked about the Tantulus system, not the tarantula, as someone tried to do, believe. It is utilities of the future. It's a system, well, Mr. Doyle showed us a map of east of Ruby Doo, of Waynesville, east of Ruby Doo, that will hopefully go under this system in 2023 and city-citywide in five years. And it's a smart grid technology that focuses on helping building sustainable utilities for the future by creating a digital network of connected and intelligent devices for electricity, water, and gas. City utilities will be able to more effectively respond to service interruptions resulting from severe storms or major events and engage proactively with the system. We had department updates. The water and sewer department, Mr. Beal said they had repaired two water mains, had put in four new services, repaired a sewer main, and jetted two sewers. They did their daily dig rights and routine maintenance on vehicles. The electric department, Mr. Sheldon had two power outages, three street lights, three missile lanes, two new services, two meter tests, two service upgrades in January. They worked in the RV park. They started brush hogging on the rattleways. Started working on routing phase two. Did maintenance on their department trucks, kept up the daily dig rates. Single-phase repossession saved 13 power outages. Mr. Sheldon also reported on the department strategic plan. Having no other business, we adjourned at 4:15. Some key questions?
Any questions for Mr. Conley? Economic Development and Government Affairs Committee, Mr. Rice?
Yes, the meeting came to order at 5:00 PM. We had no citizens' comments. We did have several guests, Mr. Randy Brown, Councilman Ed Conley, Mike Seaton, Rodney Parrott, Jordan Ryan, Michael Frye. We had Darryl Moreno there as well. We approved the minutes from the January 3rd meeting. There was a need for closed session. We went into closed session at 5:01 PM. We came out at 6:16 PM. The business spotlight of the month was low Chevrolet. We talked about the Small Business Enhancement Program. Mr. Potts stated that postcards will be mailed out letting people know about the program requirements. The applications must be submitted by March 2nd, 2023, which is coming up fairly quickly. We also discussed special events, the 100th anniversary of the Ruby Doo Bridge, which is April 1st. Everybody needs to come out for that. And we also discussed the Kids to Park Day, which is June 3rd. And having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 6:24 PM.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? We do have a resolution. I asked for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 323, a resolution of the city of Waynesville to support a memorandum of understanding with the Overland Group LLC and Dollar General of Waynesville, Missouri LLC regarding the project design and conveyance of excess property fixing in effective date.
Discussion. May I turn your motion for order to pass this resolution? Motion, Mr. Liberty? Second, Mr. Rice? Roll call vote?
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, we did not have the Rosa Brown's meeting. Into the hearing, Police Committee will be required, Mr. Liberty.
The meeting was called to order at 3:30 February 9th. Meeting was called to order February 9th at 3:30. The minutes were approved. St. Albert Fire Chief Mike Sheperd stated building inspections have been conducted. There's a few re-inspections that have to be done. Everything is going well. Chief Sheperd gave a brief overview of mass emergency communication and hyperreach that will be implemented later on this year. School resource officer, transition has been made so that all students fall under one point of contact. This transition was supervisor adjustment, not response adjustment. If there's a situation at the school, Waynesville Police Department will be the ones that respond. This just brings the jurisdiction issues under one agency, which I believe was Plasky County Sheriff's Hartman. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes.
Thank you. There has been a mutual aid agreement proposed. It was provided to the committee. Mr. Doyle stated that they're still working on the new agreement with the entities. A lot of good ideas on how to update the agreement. One idea is auto renewal, so no sunset on agreement. Another idea is allowing modification, the agreement to be made while intact. Police Department updates. Chief Cordova stated 2022 post-reparations are completed by the officers as well as their way to completing 2022 post-reparations. Rachel profiling report will be available on March 1st. This provides total statistical traffic stops for 2022. Special events have already been announced. I'll repeat it just to help you remember. Ruby Doo Bridge, 100th anniversary, April 1st. Kids to Park Day, June 3rd, 2023. Other business. Chairman Wilson stated best sapper competition will be held here the 21st in Waynesville Park from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Event is being put on by the Fort Lenhamwood Engineer School. We're anticipating 300 to 400 people. And y'all are going to love this park. Free barbecue. Have no further business. Meeting was adjourned at 4:19 PM. Next meeting will be March 9th at 3:30 PM.
Any questions for Mr. Liberty? We do have a proposed ordinance. Please read the ordinance.
First reading, two thousand and twenty-three oh four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor pro temp to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Robert for council representation to release dogs from the city animal shelter, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor pro temp to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Robert for council representation to release dogs from the animal shelter, fixing an effective date.
Discussion. May I take a motion? What is yours? Mr. Connolly, motion, second?
I'll second.
Did I not let you down there?
Hang on.
So we have Mr. Davis with the second. Call roll.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Finance and Human Resource Committee, Mr. Davis.
Finance and Human Resources Committee was called to order at five oh two P M on February ninth. A forum was established. There were no citizens' comments. The committee approved the minutes from the previous month. The bills were reviewed and the vote and second was made for the city to pay their bills. Cash flow account status was given by the city administrator and city finance officer. Committee reviewed the bills. The city had completed eight point three percent of the twenty-three fiscal year with expenses at eight percent and revenues at nine percent, so we're right on track. City bank accounts have a total of seven point one billion dollars in restricted funds, reserve funds, and usable monies. The Westgate Community Improvement District, the committee reviewed the C I D sales tax collection summary. Mr. Doyle stated that McDonald's is slated for a massive renovation that will affect the two thousand and twenty-three totals. While it's out of operation, they're gonna do some remodeling to the McDonald's. Hopefully, they put a trailer out there so I can get my McRibs. Budget adjustment was recommended for the animal shelter. Ms. Box stated that the budget adjustment is in order to pay for a new van, an animal control van for the city. We previously put twenty thousand dollars in the budget for the lease of an animal control vehicle, but the city has money in the funds where we can outright purchase it, not pay interest rates for the purchase of the vehicle, and pay ourselves back over time to bring the budget back where it should be. So so no interest to the tax man, that would be better for the city. Arbor Projects Monthly Update, Mr. Doyle stated the construction is nearly complete at the Rubidoo R V Park and should be operational by the end of March. Flyers went out to the City of Waynesville Businesses for the new economic development incentive program, and Doug Potts will be heading the project. The next projects will be the animal shelter renovation and the upgrades to the leaf and limb dump. Other business, the audit, CPA advisors will begin March thirteenth and conclude March seventeenth. With that said, those five to seven days, the finance officer will be fully engaged and on overtime. Committee adjourned at seven fifteen P M. There was no closed session. The next meeting will be held March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five P M. Subject to questions. There is a ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Are there any questions, Ms. Davis? All right, so we have a proposed ordinance, H B two thousand and twenty-three dash five. Please read that ordinance.
First reading, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-three annual budget for the purchase of an animal control vehicle, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-three annual budget for the purchase of an animal control vehicle, fixing an effective date.
Discussion. A motion?
Motion.
Mr. Davis?
Second.
Ms. Connolly? Call roll.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have the we have Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board, required by Mr. Liberty.
The Board, Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board meeting was January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at three P M. Present were Chairman George Larson. Some people were present, some were zoomed in. Vice Chairman John Doyle, Anita Ivy, myself, Randy Beck, and Bill Taylor. Those are the ones on the committee. Staff, Marion Jones, Mike Guy, and Nick Watzke. I said it right? Guest, Aaron Junkin, Bob Crane, Ryan Morton, Dave Robinson, Patrick Daniel, Kevin Downing, Dorsey Newcomb, Allen. Corolla Pruitt, Matt Chavet.
Chafetz.
Chafetz. Okay, I'll take you one more. Don Payne, me, you, and Daryl Moreno. Meeting was called to order at three o'clock. Minutes were approved. Reports by staff, administration and budget was provided to the board. Key items are fuel sales and proceeds from the grant. Airport manager, Mike Guy, provided the fuel sales update. Fuel sales are back to normal. Fourteen tow aircraft have been fueled so far this month. That was January. The normal round per month is roughly twenty to twenty-five aircraft. New business, Concare Airlines, Mr. Chavet?
Chafetz.
Chafetz. I did it right, one of these days. Stated he didn't have much to report. Compliment numbers are good. There were some issues with de-icer. He also said there are several aircraft being added to ensure reliable service. C I P projects, Mr. Doyle discussed M P E grant funds that needed to be used within a year. Tracking projects that qualify, which include sealing and paint for the hangar pavement area, F P O parking area, F P O concrete area by fuel containment pad. Also, on the list is equipment, which includes a tractor, snow plow, and brush hog. Burns and McConnell Engineering update. NEPA re-evaluations and environmental baseline survey. Targeted timeframe for submittal of the NEPA and E B S is next week, which was already passed. Terminal area master plan follow-up meeting was February ninth, one P M, Waynesville City Hall. Two thousand and twenty-three marketing costs, Mr. Doyle stated marketing grant funds have come to an end. We would still like to continue marketing to some extent. One thousand two hundred and fifty per month is the new marketing proposal. Mr. Lawrenceon made a motion to approve the new marketing budget. Also, Mayor Lawrenceon. I seconded the motion. Motion passed. S O P marketing report, Aaron Junkin provided the marketing report. There was a jump in social media when new airline was announced. There has been a good reach on Instagram, currently be been in process of transferring website domains. There was a need for closed session, went into closed session at three twenty-one, went back into open session at three thirty-seven. I made the motion to approve restricted area signage to be posted on door exiting terminal and to painting pathway outside passenger terminal area for lane to terminals, so no passengers, the passengers will know where to go instead of wandering around, which is also a safety issue. With no further business, Vice Chairman Doyle adjourned the meeting. Well, let me back up. The motion was seconded by Bill Taylor, and it passed. Now, Vice Chairman Doyle adjourned the meeting at three thirty-nine. Next meeting, Tuesday, February twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, at three P M, at Waynesville City Hall. Have questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Liberty? Okay, we'll go on to other we'll go on to other business tonight, and one of our first steps in our priority to establish our council. I'm gonna call forth. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Bob Hyatt for the Ward Four seat that the unexpired term.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then we're gonna call forth, Mr. Mr. Hyatt.
Hi, Robert Hyatt.
Do solemn swear or affirm?
Sowling swear or affirm?
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess qualifications.
Described by law?
Described by law.
For the office of Councilman?
For the office of Councilman.
Ward Four.
Ward Four.
And that I support the constitutions?
And I support the constitutions.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri?
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all the laws?
Provisions of all the laws.
Of the state?
Of the state.
Affecting cities of the third class?
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the City of Waynesville?
And the ordinances of the City of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office?
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences?
And respect the competences.
And information?
And information.
Which comes to my possession?
Which comes to my possession.
Congratulations, sir.
So you can put your your name up there, just one of the. Sir? Immediately following this, we'll take a photo. With that being said, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, which is the City Administrator Report.
So Finance Committee Chairman Cecil Davis kind of briefly touched on and discussed ARPA projects and ongoing improvements from those funds. Just wanted to kind of go through those with the council, because you've seen projects now in the city and and, you know, I'm hearing S I P projects, what what's going on, and I don't I don't wanna confuse those with with how they're being funded and what project is what. We have grant projects, there's a lot of things happening. These are these projects were funded through ARPA funds. The city received in response to COVID in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. These are currently required, there are currently requirements for these funds, and the city has, I think, two years ago, developed an ARPA team for the administration of these funds. So I'd like to go through some of the projects currently that are on the board for these funds. There were some programs last year that that were developed out of these funds, and we have sunset some of those programs due to the requirements that the team had put on them. These funds have to be fully dedicated by two thousand and twenty-four and spent by two thousand and twenty-six. So if we can briefly go through some of the projects that this team has developed early this year, and we hope to implement through this this fiscal year. The R V Park upgrade, if you've kind of paid attention to that, you've seen a lot of work down there. City personnel continues to make these improvements to the R V Park. It will increase the number of locations or R V lots by fourteen. Currently, utilities installed include sewer, water, and electric. Those are installed complete, waiting on some parts to finish up the electric connections. This was a good timing for this project. With this, there were some some dead trees and some fall hazards along the lot locations on the bank of the Rubidoo or the waterfront lots, and we've had to address those as well. And it's really been a good time to expand our park, so we have places for those tenants to go as as we continue to improve that area. Right now, I would say the project's probably seventy percent complete with with these reins. We all we have left is the installation of the pads and the final gravel grade of the road in the pads. The the next ARPA team project that was approved, if you will, was Police Department. The ARPA team approved forty thousand dollars to the City of Waynesville Police Department. One of these includes the upgrading of the existing duty weapons for the City of Waynesville. The new duty weapons are Smith and Wesson nine millimeters. We those weapons are here. We are waiting on the ammunition. We expect delivery by March next month. The existing duty weapons were forty Smith and Wessons, and those duty weapons, they need more to the policemen that pack them than they would to anybody, so the team offered that weapon to that policeman if they were interested in purchasing that weapon for their own personal collection, if you will, or or keepsake, you know, for two hundred dollars, and we are working through that with each patrolman and policeman. Small Business Enhancement Program is a program that we're pushing for this year. They funded this program, the ARPA team funded it thirty thousand dollars for for the program. We recently developed a flyer and distributed it. The program provides opportunity for commercial retail businesses within the City of Waynesville to potentially purchase purchase equipment, supplies, interior renovations, infrastructure needs. This kind of mirrors the Build Back Better program that we had for the residential side last year, and I think it's still ongoing this year, if I'm not mistaken, but it kind of kind of does that. There's a demo rental grant, demolition and renovation grant. ARPA team funded fifty thousand to a commercial demolition renovation grant. The details of how that grant is going to be disseminated are still being worked out, but we expect that to be online very soon. Animal shelter, the ARPA team has funded a fifty thousand dollars for animal shelter upgrades. We are currently working with the animal shelter supervisor for upgrading the facility, and it's being reviewed by staff. The leaf and limb dump entry gate improvement has been discussed several times over the years. ARPA team funded eighty-five thousand for this improvement to include the installation of a coded entry gate as well as improved fencing along that area to allow access without the need for personnel to be there or a key checkout or something like that. So so that's another improvement that you will see, and I can tell you that I've seen documents on all of these programs come across my desk as latest today. I know I reviewed a leaf and limb dump gate proposal today. Want to jump down to the utility side now with Ed over there?
Tarantula system?
Yeah, the tarantula system. So looking at G I S mapping, as you guys have been aware, last December, we kind of came out with our G I S program that the city has developed over the the previous year. We have one system, the natural gas system is the live system that we need to map. We're we're trying to plan that mapping with with, you know, with the engineers to make sure that we can at least implement some of that mapping. That mapping will extend from Fort Wood to nearly Richwood. It's it's fairly extensive as to our natural gas system requirements. And then again, upcoming events, we've kind of covered those this evening, so that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Doyle? Thank you for that report. Council comments? We will start with Mr. Connolly.
I'm not used to being the one to start. You start behind the other, and I'm kind of the other. I don't have a lot to say. I'm glad to see that we are working to revive that way down county.
I'm glad to see that we are working to revitalize downtown even more. The building at this time is fantastic. I hope that they do a lot of business and draw other businesses to fill in some of the vacant spots we still have. Now, on a side note, the soccer, the youth soccer is having a fundraiser at Freddy's on March the 6th. Go out and eat, tell people you're there for the fundraiser, you know, each sports gets a portion of the proceeds. And I'll pass, Mr. Liberty. I'd like to start off with basically repeating what Ed said, is I really appreciate the business coming to Waynesville. I thank Mr. Rodney Parrott and the Dollar General team for coming to Waynesville and being so receptive to the requests that have come from citizens of Waynesville and Mr. Doyle and his staff. Thank you to my fellow council persons for the time and effort that you've, you've put into your job to include the time we went through that long night. I certainly appreciate it. And also thank you to Mr. Doyle, his staff, and the city employees. You all make us look good. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, I want to thank the citizens of Waynesville. We listened to your comments on Facebook and in the meetings about the Dollar General. A lot of people don't realize things that we asked the Dollar General to do that they did, like all brick building with block accents, they did that. The Route 66 sign on the side, the 100-year anniversary thing, we didn't even ask for that, and they got that. Land for a parking lot, that was a big thing, that people wanted a parking lot. I think we're gonna get a good parking lot out of the deal. We also have some land for picnic park area next to the Muriel, and on the building, again, we got enhanced roofline, which most of them don't. We got retro sort of looking signs to the basic Dollar General logo. Want to thank Mr. Doyle and Mr. Potts. They did a lot of work on that, and everything's coming together. So again, I want to thank the Waynesville citizens for the comments, because we learned a lot from them. Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I won't talk about the Dollar General, because everybody else has it, but yesterday, I came to the city with a business owner. The, the city was more than apt to handle it, but I said something in that meeting that a lot of people don't really get, I guess. I wish everybody in the city would understand that those people in the front of this city, behind those glass, is everybody's punching bag. Nobody comes into the city that isn't mad about how expensive their electric bill is or how their utilities got turned off or something like that. So when you come into the city and you talk to those employees of the city up front, just remember that they have heard and been yelled at by probably 50 people already that day. So be as nice as you can. You know, it's, and I equate it to the DMV. Nobody wants to go to the DMV and register their car and pay money. So those people at the DMV are everybody's punching bag. The people up front at the city here, St. Roberts, everywhere else, are the same way. They're here for customer service, but they have been beat down all week before you get there.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for, yes, I'd like to thank everyone for allowing me the opportunity to, to serve on the city council. I'll do the best I can do to serve the people of Waynesville, and I'm pretty excited about this, this new adventure. Thank you.
Thank you. It's definitely an adventure.
What's that?
It's definitely an adventure.
And I just want to end with a couple of comments. First off, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight and all of the comments that have been given and directed towards Dollar General. I do want to remind everyone about the Leadership banquet that is tomorrow. We have some nominees from the city of Waynesville. I have to say this person's name first. My wife is a nominee. And then also, we have former mayor Louz Hartman, who everybody knows. And I think it's gonna be a great time, no matter who wins. We just want to show up and show our appreciation for the time that they give to our community. And it's just, they volunteer without looking for that recognition, so we want to go out and we want to support them in all of the nominees in every category. I do want to point out something that I did not say when we opened, but I want to kind of elaborate on this a little bit. In this 60 to 90 days, there is another initiative, and that is to improve our communication. And it is our responsibility as a city to tell our story. Our story will not be told through just the media. We plan on streaming our committee meetings here within the next 90 days, and you will be able to see and hear exactly what was said and who said what and what actually transpired. I love the media, I, I love it, but they don't always, they can't, they don't have enough space to put down everything. What we want to do is we want to tell our story, because there's, it's a great story to tell. We have a lot of great things going on there. We have councilmen on our committee. They are good, going above and beyond to meet the needs of this, this community as a whole, and also to be diligent in their research and managing our resources, which is our finance, and most importantly, our time and our people. So we want to tell that story. Also, I'll end with that. So enjoy your week. Come out and join us tomorrow. If you didn't get your ticket, I'm sorry. I'll take pictures and you'll be able to see, but enjoy your week. This, this meeting is adjourned.